Can I ask Senator Torres if you can please lead us in prayer?
Quina anitata ilahina zeni Spiritu Santo, amén. Tat' en ma'mini sinha itoru na'tsina. U sena gradesi esina bonita na'dia. Ua gradesi i oportunidad itapandaña guini giles natura para tana ma'oli itzatzota para itautamu, itautau guan. Ufa pa'sen cosino in bendisi to loquit estina dia itzetluta esnarisa i kompya'nosnya pagu Ufa pa'sen ha'toru i gracias zeni benedisi gininilangit para hita pagu. Azudaham naayam i wisdom para tahengi todu unisita para ta'to'wi itzetotmu guini gi islata.
We ask you, Lord, to guide us today as we continue on our journey to do our jobs as senators, that we may be ever mindful of our duty to protect and to defend and to be considerate and mindful of all the people for whom we serve in your name, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Senator Ada, can you lead us in the infresi?
Inifresi. Gininimas tat kilo gi hinasoko, imas tat kilo mgi korasonho zenimas figu naniniasinahu u ofresen maisazu para ba'hu protehi zen hu defendi i hiningi, i koutura, i lingwahi, i ari, i hanu zen itano'tchamoro ni irin shakku dere'tzu gininaszu ustata esti hu afitma ki hilu i biblia zen i banderahu i bandera guan.
Thank you, Senator. And will Senator Uggan lead us in the Guam him in chamoro and Senator Morrison in the singing of the National Anthem?
Pan'ohgi chamoru hurita no'ta kantai matu na'nyagi todui lu'ga't. Para i onra, para i gloria, aviva i isla sen parat. Para i onra, para i gloria, aviva i isla sen parat. To'dui tempui pas para hita zen gininilangit na bendishon. Kontra i peligru na fansofuham, zu's protehi is land Guam. Kontra i peligru na fansofuham, zu's protehi is land Guam.
Can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleam whose bright stripes and bright stars drew the perilous spire? For the red ones we fought were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red flare, the once bursting air, came through to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does the star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home
Clerks, please take your call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Espaldón. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Sniklis. Senator Torres. Senator Underwood. Speaker Wampat. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we excuse Senator Barnes from session.
No motion, no objections, order.
And I move that we approve the Legislative Journal, both journals dated February 15, 2016, and March 8, 2016, both subject to corrections.
Hearing objections, order.
There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be penned in a session journal.
No objections, order.
There are also messages from Imacallahan and Guan, and I move for the same.
No objections, order.
As well as standing reports of standing committees, I also move that they be penned in a session journal.
So ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees at this time. So on item 12, Madam Speaker, under one motion, I move that Bill numbers 254-33LS through 269-33LS, Bill numbers 270-33COR to 284-33COR, Resolution numbers 283-33LS through 293-33LS, Resolution numbers 294-33COR through 307-33COR, Resolution 308-33LS, Resolution numbers 309-33COR to 323-33COR, Certificate number 119-33LS, and Certificate numbers 120-33COR through Certificate number 124-33COR all be given its first reading.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Under motions, Madam Speaker, I move that any resolution or certificate of commensory or condolence in nature that's introduced for the duration of this session, that all senators be co-sponsors, that those resolutions or certificates be automatically adopted, and that the sponsors work with the legal counsel and the clerk in the preparation of these documents.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
I also move to continue to give you the latitude that you need, Madam Speaker, to manage the second reading file, that if in the event a member needs more time or that bill or resolution needs more time, that that be set aside and that when the sponsor's ready to proceed, that you will be authorized by this motion to reorder the second reading file however you see necessary to continue to allow us to be expedient.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there was a very productive public hearing yesterday conducted by our Oversight Chair of both the Chamor Land Trust Commission and the Airport Authority, Senator Tom Ada, and so on his behalf, I move to place on the legislative concurrence file from Senator Tom Ada's committee, the nomination of Gianji Pica P. Farron to serve as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission, as well as from the same committee, the nomination of Ricardo C. Duñez to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Okay.
Thank you, Senator. On legislative concurrence?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, from Vice Speaker BJ Cruz's Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, on the nomination of Peter S. Cowell to serve as Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission with the Vice Speaker's committee's recommendation, do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
Objections, so ordered.
From my Committee on Roles, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capitol District, on the nomination of Robert Perron to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency with my committee's recommendation, do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
Objections, so ordered.
From your Committee on Higher Education, Culture, Public Library, and Women's Affairs, on the nomination of Richard P. Sablon to serve as a member of the GCC Board of Trustees with your committee's recommendation, do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
So ordered.
And also from my committee, on the nomination of Florida M. Sanchez to serve on the EPA Board with the committee's recommendation, do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
So ordered.
And based on the two, the motion that just passed, I moved on from Senator Ada's, Tom Ada's committee, on the appointment of Gianji Pica P. Farron to serve as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission with Senator Tom Ada's committee's recommendation, do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
So ordered.
As well as from the same committee, Senator Tom Ada's committee, on the nomination of Ricardo C. Duñez to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board with Senator Tom Ada's committee's recommendation, to do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the second reading file, we'll start with Senator Tom Ada and Bill number 253-33.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to accept Bill number 253-33COR as amended and substituted on the
What I have is further substituted?
Well, then I'm going to make that motion.
Okay, you are, okay. So we're going to accept, then a motion is to accept, then 253 as amended and substituted on the floor.
Okay. Well, I was going to make the motion, so the first motion was to accept the bill, and then I was going to make a second motion to place Bill number 253-33COR as amended and further substituted on the floor to the third reading file and to discuss it.
And, okay, let me make sure that everyone has then the, as amended and substituted on the floor, does everyone? Okay, I understand it's coming around. Okay, Senator, so on that motion then, which is for now is to accept, then 253 as amended by the author and substituted on the floor. No objections, so ordered. Senator, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker-
And for placement now. Motion to place.
So, Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 253-33COR as amended and further substituted on the floor to the third reading file and to discuss it.
You may proceed, Senator.
Okay, thank you. Madam Speaker, Bill 253-33, basically what it does is it makes an amendment to the FY2015 budget law, and the amendments that it makes is to give further authorizations to the use of the lapses of the funds that were authorized by the FY2015 budget bill to carry forward these funds. And so, the Department of Public Works, in concert with Bureau of Budget and Management Research, have verified that there is in fact approximately $1.8 million from FY2014 and FY2015, and they would like to carry that forward. Right now, they have authorization to carry forward the 2015, but they want to add to that, the authority to carry forward the FY2014. But the language on the law, it limits, it limits the use of those lapsed funds strictly just for the maintenance of school buses. And so, the Department of Public Works has requested that in addition to authorizing the use of those funds, the $1.8 million for the maintenance of school buses, is to be able to utilize however much funds they believe they can eke out of that to purchase new buses. At the public hearing, Department of Public Works indicated that they are considering purchasing anywhere between five to 10 buses. Now, so what the bill does is on page two, line 12, it adds the phrase "and fiscal year 2014" to allow then the carrying of the lapses from that fiscal year. In addition to that, on line 14, it adds the additional authorization for the purchase of new school buses. And the, and so the reason why the bill was substituted was that the original language says, "purchase of new school buses," to replace buses that have gone beyond their economic service life. And I think, I just wanted to remove that language and let the department decide whether, when they buy the new buses, to either supplement the existing fleet, or whether in fact to use the new buses to replace out buses that are just beyond economical repair. And so, that's the reason for the substitute bill. But otherwise, the amendments, I think, that are being made by the bill is pretty much clear and straightforward. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anyone who would like to speak on Bill, main motion on Bill 253? Senator Sniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. More so just a, I just wanted to raise a point, and that is that recent reports have indicated that in 2014, we had a $60 million deficit, and in 2015, we had a $25 million deficit, but then we have BB Mar coming around and saying we have $1.8 million left over for this particular purpose. And so, I'm just, I wanted to, I guess, raise the point to the body and inquire how we're recording a deficit in the government on a fiscal year basis, but we're still able to show lapses and surpluses in particular individual accounts. And at what point does the government, or the administration, or at what point does somebody come back to the body and say, you know, we're coming into deficit on the overall bottom line, but these individual accounts are showing excess funds, and we need to be able to come to terms with the fact that we need to reconcile all of the outstanding expenses that we have not been able to cover due to our deficit over the last two fiscal years? So I guess I wanted to pose that as a comment, Madam Speaker, if not a question. At what point does somebody come back and say, hey, you know, we have all these so-called extra funds in all these other accounts, but we have all these shortfalls in all these other areas that we've appropriated for, how are we going to balance the book? Because in the end, Madam Speaker, you know, as I just keep going through this process and as I keep getting a clearer and clearer picture of how the finances are somehow adding up in one place and not in another, you know, we got to start reconciling everything as a single bottom line, and if at the single bottom line, at the end of the day, we're showing a deficit in 2014 and in 2015, you know, how are we able to say we're going to go out and have money for these additional new buses when we have vendors and all these other obligations that have gone unpaid? We just saw a recent report, Madam Speaker, from the hospital, and one of the things that just jumped out at me was, I remember several legislatures ago, maybe the last legislature probably, we moved forward with a financing authorization for GMH to be able to pay off Perry Point, because they were charging us multiples more for supplies because we were so behind in our payments to them. And so, if my memory serves me correctly, we authorized some financing even to go out and pay this thing off, because otherwise, they wouldn't be providing any more supplies to us, only to find out in a recent report in the media, that again of Perry Point, that same vendor that I think we went out and borrowed to pay off just in the last legislature, there's almost a million dollar unpaid invoice to that vendor. So, when I try and reconcile everything, Madam Speaker, and I see that we have $1.8 million here, and we're going to say, maybe we're going to go out and buy new buses with this, how are we reconciling this extra $1.8 million to that $1 million payable? I raise it because it becomes a frustrating point for me, Madam Speaker. I have nothing, nothing in particular against the bill in terms of the intent, but when you follow the dollars back to where they originate from, and when you look at the overall balance sheet of the government and the outstanding payables that we have with respect to the cash assets that we have on the books, I just, I have a difficult time at this point now reconciling, authorizing additional expenditures when we have outstanding payables. So I just, I wanted to raise that point, perhaps if the administration is listening, if BB Mar is listening, could they give us some kind of a reconciling? What is outstanding? Where do we have leftover money? And then, you know, we could be making appropriations to try and pay things off. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, does anybody else who'd like to speak? Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of Bill 253-33, and this is really primarily because if we are to expect our students to get to school, I mean, to learn, they have to be brought to school on time. A lot of times, what we had experienced is that the buses would be late because they don't have enough buses, because they break down, and I know I was very happy to see that there were additional buses, but I really believe that this is just needed to ensure that we have preventative maintenance and we can address whatever needs. Every time we use the bus, something breaks down, just like our buildings, our homes, we know that every day, every time we use an equipment, it wears down. So, Madam Speaker, on behalf of the 32,000 public school students and perhaps an additional 10,000 students who are enrolled in the private schools who utilize a bus, I stand in strong support of the passage of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, does anybody else who'd like to speak? Senator Espaldón, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I understand. I understand the need for buses and the maintenance of the buses and whatnot, and much like a previous speaker, the first previous speaker who spoke, I have at least a concern of how we're using our funds. These funds are coming out, I mean, in this bill that says that the legislature finds that there's a total balance of $1.3 million in 2015 lapsed funds, 356, which comes to the general fund, and about $1 million from the Guam Highway Fund. And again, I just want to register my concern that every time we seem to appropriate from special funds, the appropriation is inappropriate, because these special funds have a defined use, and the territorial highway fund does not include the use of the expenditure of those funds for buses, and we constantly do things like this. And so, to me, it's like, it seems to me that the proper way, and I've said this before in previous sessions, is to amend the law to allow the law, to allow the funds to be expended and according to how we're proposing, but it seems that time and time again, that we go into the special funds, dip our hands into it, and use those special funds for purposes other than what those special funds were created for. And so, I just want to register my concern that there has to be a point, and I'm not sure when, hopefully the sooner the better, that we start paying attention to these details, because it seems to me that by doing this, and of course, we know we can, we can change the law here and do a notwithstanding and all that good stuff, notwithstanding clause, but again, the funds were created for special purposes, and the inclusion of school buses and its maintenance and repair was not one of the purposes that the territorial highway fund was created for. But I, again, I understand the need for buses, perhaps when we take a look at the budget again for 2017, we have to, perhaps if we can be given a lot more time to really look at what's in that budget, since it's usually at least 150-some pages deep, to be able to identify what are we really, really doing, because sometimes we get the budget maybe a day in advance, sometimes we've gotten it the same day that we go into the budget session without any real, a real good look to be able to see how we're appropriating and where we're appropriating from. So, like, again, I just register my concern that we're dipping into special funds that have special purposes, and in this situation, this expenditure is not one of them. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Hafadin, good morning, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 253. Not only, of course, do I, just like everyone else in this room, in this hall, I'm sure supports the purchase and the intent of this bill to help Public Works and ensure we have new school buses. You know, I also want to state my position on some of the concerns that were brought up in terms of, you know, some of the proceeds of where we're getting these funds to purchase the school buses are coming from special funds, and perhaps some may interpret that these special funds should be used for just specific, for specific purposes, but it's a fact of life, it's reality, Madam Speaker, that when you run hundreds of millions of dollars in terms of our government of Guam budget and the types of services that we are mandated to provide to our community, these things happen and must happen. And I commend Senator Tom Ada for being able to identify these funds that have lapsed and may be available for this purpose, and that's just, you know, that's just the way, you know, that's life, and that's reality, is that when you, you know, us here in this body, if we see a need to address an issue, a specific issue like this is doing here with school buses, we go out there and see where we can find the funds to make it happen. And so, I support the intent of the bill and also support Senator Ada's attempt to be able to find these funds from whatever sources and be able to move this forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Respecho, on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also rise in support of Bill 253-33, and just to put things into proper perspective, I know that sometimes we have a tendency to look at the bottom line, and but when you're, as a previous speaker said, when you're dealing with any government, there's reasons why you have appropriations for each agencies, and they're supposed to have all these mandates to carry out those appropriations, and so, or those appropriations to carry out those mandates. And so, in the case of this bill, I rise to give special recognition to our Oversight Chair for recognizing that in the case of Public Works, that there's lapsed funds, that instead of it just lapsing and going nowhere, that this bill would authorize the carryover of those lapsed funds and apply it so that we could purchase buses and maintain these buses and also provide fill for these buses. If you take a look at why Bill 253 was referred to Senator Ada's committee and not to the Committee on Appropriations, is specific to what I just pointed out. Through the budget process, we budget for every single department and agency, and if there's a bill to reorder how that appropriation shall be reordered, or if there's a bill to identify in these special circumstances how those lapsed funds should be used, then that bill would be referred to the Committee of Oversight as opposed to it being referred to the Committee on Appropriations. So this bill really is not an appropriation matter on the face of it. It provides for an authorization which would lead to cash being available per an appropriation, but on the face of it, it's an authorization to carry over lapsed funds. If Public Works wasn't frugal in how they handled their appropriation, we wouldn't even be having this debate today, because we wouldn't even be having this bill. So now, every time there's an opportunity where monies that were appropriated weren't spent, where there's an opportunity to identify for additional- spent, where there's an opportunity to identify for additional useful purposes, we should be focused on that. It's good the debate is not whether or not we need to purchase school buses or maintain school buses to support both public and private school students who utilize this transportation to get to school. And it seems like the debate is what this money should go for and if it should go for other purposes other than providing for buses. So, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill. I commend the Oversight Chair for working closely with the Department of Public Works and recognizing that they do have these lapse funds. And I also commend the hard-working employees at the Department of Public Works for giving up these monies so that buses can be purchased in this regard. Otherwise, we would be faced with an entirely different bill that seeks to provide whatever appropriation is necessary to fulfill this mandate. Because then, we're all going to want to make sure that there's adequate buses to service our schools, and Bill 253 is one way to ensure that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator.
Point of information, Madam Speaker?
Yes?
The previous speaker basically made the argument that, you know, it's more appropriate to spend these funds rather than just let it lapse and then having it go nowhere. If I may, Madam Speaker, the point of information is that the territorial highway funds, as it is encoded in the law, is that in essence, they're to be used for rights of ways, for planning and designing construction, and the maintenance of public highways and roads and villages. On top of it, there is a part in here in the code of the territorial highway fund that no part or portion of the monies in the territorial highway fund or whatever source derived shall be used for the maintenance or operation of a public transit system. We can argue, of course, whether this is a public transit system or not, but it seems to be used for public purposes. Again, I just want to point out that they're saying, yes, we should be able to take money from where we are. My recommendation at the time was that if we're going to take money...
Point of personal privilege, I just hope the gentleman will not put words in my mouth. And I don't think you're raising a point of order.
No, I wrote it right there. Lapse is better than one lapse going nowhere.
I think you're asking for additional time to speak. You're not giving a point of order, you're asking for additional time to speak.
I was reading the law, Madam Speaker.
Senators, yes, and your point is well-taken because I know you are reading exactly from the law.
I'm not, I didn't present myself...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That's all, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Other than that, just reading rather than like Senator...
Madam Speaker, I rose to a personal privilege because I didn't present myself as a reckless spending liberal here, that we should just take money wherever and just spend it for whatever purposes.
Yes, I know you didn't say that at all either. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, on the main motion. Senators, we're on the main motion. Is anybody else who would like to speak? There being none, Senator Tom Adda, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly, I think a lot of the points that have been raised are certainly very valid, and we should all be concerned about it. And we should renew those concerns as we come up for the upcoming budget discussions and whatnot to further safeguard the funds, public funds and whatnot. But notwithstanding, you know, we've seen in public hearings, you bring in BBMR and they say, oh, no, everything is, you know, on track and all that. And you bring in DOA and they say, yeah, we haven't been able to pay for these because it's a cash issue and all that stuff. So, the bottom line is, is that DPW is basically saying, look, we just need the authorization and let us sort it out internally.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion to send 253 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 264-33, Senator Morrison, you recognize?
Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 264-33 LS as substituted by the author. Do you have a ready file? I'd like to speak on it.
You may proceed, Senator.
Madam Speaker, I want to thank the chairman, Dennis Rodriguez, and his team for their work in preparing Bill 264 for this week's session. With little or no action taken on the Southern Development Master Plan over the last 20-plus years, Bill 64 as substituted seeks to put our southern mayors in the driver's seat so that our southern villages can finally have a responsible economic growth plan in place, similar to the north and central Guam land use plans which was created several years ago. Although Public Law 19-38, which mandates the creation of the Southern Development Master Plan, authorized a $300,000 fund for this task, it is obvious that not a penny has been spent on this project. The Southern Development Master Plan has yet to be developed. Bill 264 as substituted requires the Southern Development Master Plan Task Force to develop a budget within three months following this enactment. Within that timeframe, the Task Force will also be required to submit a preliminary action plan to include a project schedule and an identification of funding options. In preparing its budget request for review by the governor and the legislature, the Task Force shall also consider federal funding sources that may be available to support the creation of the Southern Development Master Plan, such as federal grants. Madam Speaker, as you may be aware, the north and central land use plan, which was submitted to the legislature several years ago, was prepared using federal funding that the Bureau Statistics and Plans received from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Ocean and Coastal Management Resource Grant. And the approximate cost for that was $120,000. Moving forward, it is my sincere hope that the passage of Bill 264 will help get things moving in the weeks and months ahead so that the Southern Development Master Plan can finally be developed. With the help of our mayors, the group of elected officials with the closest connection to our people, it is my sincere hope that we will not have to wait another 30 years before action is taken on this matter. Southern mayors should be given this important responsibility of working with families and government entities to map out the future of their respective communities. Madam Speaker, I also want to point out that we should no longer ignore some very alarming data, I mentioned this in the past, that was put out in the 2010 census report of our southern families migrating north or leaving the island. And those numbers are very alarming. And it's in an average of 500,000 to 1,000, if not 1,000 individuals leaving their homes in southern Guam. I also want to point out, Madam Speaker, in case some of the colleagues may have, I know there was an email that was circulated yesterday, and I think many of you got that response to one of our members in our community that had some very valid concerns regarding Bill 264. And I think I've addressed them accordingly. So I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on Bill 264.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motions, anyone who would like to speak on 264, on the main motion? One more time, does anyone would like to speak on 264? There being none, Senator Morrison, okay, Senator Sinicless, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just had a, excuse me. I just had a couple inquiries, just for clarification. On page two, line 17 and 18, it references a preliminary action plan. I'm not familiar with the greater question of the overall section, but is there an action plan that is already drafted by the group? Or are they going to be required to draft some kind of an action, a development plan for the South within three months?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I do yield to the question. Madam Speaker, in Section 68, 604, it requires the Task Force shall produce an initial draft of the Southern Development Master Plan, which then shall be subject to the public discussion in form of public meetings. I think the goal is prior to enactments to ensure that there's a clear understanding and roadmap of how we're going to address this, either in the preliminary findings that even through funding sources, what type of funding sources may be used to address this, so that the legislature and the administration ensures how we're going to carry this out. Also, what was pointed in the Public Law, the reason for that is, in Public Law 19-38, you know, there was a funding mechanism that obviously never basically got to help carry out this task. So I think it's important that within the three months that they will provide some preliminary action plan so that it could ensure that, you know, we understand the schedule and identification of how, or schedule of activities that we'll know how to proceed in this project. That's what I think would be best to address. That's why we've also deleted the $300,000 appropriation that was actually specified in Public Law 19-38. Because I think, understanding what took place in previous legislature is that that mechanism never got fulfilled because I think the action plan should have been addressed first or prior, or preliminary action plan should have been put in place so we know exactly. For example, the north and central plan, north and central land use plans, was, if you look at the budget for the southern plan, it was around almost triple, almost triple the cost for just the north and the central plan to combine. And I think the way that was proceeded, in my understanding, through the Bureau Stats and Plans, is they issued through some preliminary action items that they knew how they're going to spend, and it ended up only costing $110,000. So, that's why I believe within three months they should come back, provide us this preliminary action plan.
Senator was able to answer your question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and I thank the author of the bill for answering the question. I don't have any problems with the bill, but I do have a concern of the idea that, you know, we're giving only three months to develop an action plan that must include, it's on line 18, it must include a project schedule. I'm just concerned that it's kind of rushing southern development. I think the whole intent of the bill is to create a greater forum for us to answer the greater question of exactly what does southern development mean for Guam and how are we going to go about pursuing that aligned with the unique existence of our southern communities? You know, they're the bastions of our culture, they're the home plate of our traditions and our values. And I just find the idea of creating an action plan that must include a project schedule relative to development of the South within three months, I find that to be kind of accelerated. My other concern, Madam Speaker, is on page three, subsection 68, 605, Task Force Membership, the bill will also require new members of this task force. And so, we kind of, we all know in the body here how the appointment process works. You know, it takes a while for members to get appointed, it takes a while for the task force to convene. Just creating new members, bringing them up to speed, getting them informed on what the task force's roles and responsibilities are, that's all going to take a while. And so, you know, that's going to eat into this three-month timeline. And the way the language is written on lines 15 through 18 is that no later than three months following the enactment of this act, that action plan must be developed. And so, we're going to create new members in the task force, they're going to have to be identified, they're going to have to agree to sit on the task force, they're finally going to have to be formally appointed, they're going to have to finally meet, and all that's going to eat into this three-month timeline mandate. So, it's really not even three months to develop an action plan with a project schedule for the South. It's a much shorter timeframe when you factor in the reformation and the meeting of the task force. So, I guess I would like to ask the author then, perhaps we can consider an extended timeline for the development of this action plan? Because from my perspective, Madam Speaker, I actually think that we should be taking a lot longer in our consideration of what exactly southern development should look like. Perhaps we should not encourage an action plan to be developed within three months of enactment. So I would like to pose the suggestion to the author, I guess as an inquiry, if he's open to making the three-month action plan something further extended?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I yield to the question. Madam Speaker, in Public Law 19-38, the actual timeline calls for the final draft to be submitted within a year. So, you look at this 12-month span, you know, I think three years, I mean, three months is sufficient. It's really just an action plan for how this task force is going to proceed. Who knows? They may come back to this body or provide this preliminary action plan and may require additional time. And maybe we'll allow the task force to adjust that. The task force membership is actually intact. The only thing we really did different is we put our mayors and our southern communities in the driver's seat to hopefully steer more conversation and move this plan forward. And also having the mayor designated by the task force chair the task force. But I think three months is ample time given that in Public Law 38, it's actually a year designated to come back and submit a final draft to this body and also for approval by the governor and submit, of course, to the legislature for final approval. But, Madam Speaker, I think within the original law, having that year, three-month window is, just to come back with an action plan to see how we're going to proceed is, I think, sufficient time. But I appreciate the colleagues' concerns, and maybe they may come back again, like I said, and possibly suggest extending the time. But I think three months is fair to work with, and knowing how these planners work and working with them, I think three months could be a reasonable timeframe unless, again, they suggest they need more time.
Senator was able to answer your question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Yeah, I'm just of a different opinion. I really, my concern is that if we go up a three-month timeframe for an initial or preliminary action plan, I mean, the kind of things that move that quickly are the things that have already kind of been put on the table. You know, we already know some of the southern or near-southern projects that have been proposed with prospective development, and I'm concerned that those might be the ones put on the table within this three-month timeframe. I really think that, you know, the intent of this bill, and I appreciate the intent, is for us to get a greater dialogue of what southern development really means to the entire community with the input and participation of these new members. And then from there, getting an idea of what that looks like, and then coming to terms of how we're going to either support or protect that with the policies that we pass here in this body. I'm just concerned that this section here, requiring an action plan to be created within three months, would kind of put on the fast track some of these projects that have already been discussed in the community, because otherwise, what other developments can you come up with in just a three-month timeframe? It just takes a while to conceptualize really what we want the South to look like. It, it just takes a while to conceptualize, really, what we want the South to look like, and how we want the, the development to take place there, if any. It involves not only what kind of new structures we may want down there, but also what kind of areas we would want to conserve, what kind of areas we want to set aside as, as historic sites or preserves or what have you. And I, I just don't see that being something that we can accomplish in just three months. So I would, I would, I guess, in, in order to make myself more comfortable with the bill, I'd like to perhaps amend that three-month timeframe, amend it maybe out to, if, if the law requires the plan to be produced within twelve months, I would, I would even be fine with saying that, that within twelve months, we will have a preliminary action plan, that must include a project schedule. So all these members will have time to convene and get together and, and discuss this, the Southern Communities can be engaged over the course of a twelve-month period, and then from there, the final thing that will be, or the, the item that will be transmitted would all be preliminary for this body to consider. So I would like to propose an amendment to increase the timeframe from three months to twelve months following the enactment of this act.
On the amendment. Want to take a brief recess? Would take a brief recess. We'll take a brief recess. We'll take a brief recess.